This is a, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a special emergency meeting of the Board of Finance. Today is March 16th.
Board of Selectmen.
Can we start that again? Special. This is, I'm supposed to be at a Board of Finance meeting right now. But that got canceled. So let's start again. Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is March 16th, 2020. This is a special emergency meeting. Why don't we all please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to my flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but there's only one item on the agenda. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that is to, a discussion. Thank you. The meeting is called to discuss the COVID-19 coronavirus and its impact on town services, departments, and municipal buildings. It's appropriate that I bring you folks up to speed. It's also appropriate that we talk about a declaration of the state of emergency for the town of East Lime that I would like to declare, or I have declared, and I'm asking you to support it or revoke, your actions are to confirm it or revoke it. And then talk about what we're doing in the town at this stage in preparation for what could be possible other stages. We are sitting oddly, differently than usual. We're trying to maintain social distance. That's the number one, other than washing hands and not touching face. We are, it, social distance is very important to the public. We're hearing that. We're understanding. That's the reason why restaurants, bars, movie theaters, health clubs, by order of the governor today, were closed, and so many other things had been closing. We know that schools have been closed throughout the state, at least for a period of two weeks. The ordinance 31.06 in the East Lime Charter, we have an ordinance that says, "In the event of a disaster, a serious disaster or sudden emergency, the agency shall be under the direction and supervision of the First Selectmen, and the Director shall act on his or her, as his or her advisor in the Chief of Staff," and we're talking about the Emergency Management Agency. In that event, the First Selectmen may declare a state of emergency for the town if, in his or her opinion, such a declaration is necessary, whereupon he or she shall immediately call an emergency meeting of the Board of Selectmen, which shall confirm or revoke the declaration. In such an event, the First Selectmen is empowered to apply to the state and the federal government for disaster assistance. And that's primarily why we're doing this. We're going to incur extra expenses through payroll, through supplies. We're already seeing that. And this could grow on and linger on for a long period of time. We want to be eligible for what's already been declared as a national emergency, and therefore, more than likely, disaster assistance will be made available to the citizens of East Lime, to the town government. So in front of you tonight is the Declaration of the State of Emergency for the Town of East Lime. And it goes through, I don't think I need to read it. Do you think I need to read it, Mrs. Hardy?
I believe it should be read into the record.
Yes. Would I be to do it first? Why don't you do it, Kathy?
Okay. Declaration of the State of Emergency for the Town of East Lime. Whereas on March 10, 2020, the Governor of the State of Connecticut declared a public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency for the State of Connecticut pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 19A-131 and 28-9, in response to the global pandemic of COVID-19 disease associated with a novel coronavirus that is currently affecting multiple countries and states. And whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency to combat the coronavirus that is currently infecting the population of the United States. And whereas, the effect of the transmission of COVID-19 has resulted in the spread of infections in Connecticut and throughout the country, as well as resulting in shortages of personal protective equipment and other supplies that could jeopardize public safety and civil preparedness. And whereas, in response to the issuance of declarations of a public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency by the Governor of this state, and a national emergency by the President of the United States, and the spread of COVID-19 as a result of the global pandemic, the Chief Executive Officer of the Town of East Lime, its First Selectman, Mark C. Nickerson, hereby finds that a state of emergency now exists in the Town of East Lime. And whereas, due to the significant danger to public health posed by the spread of COVID-19 and shortages of supplies and equipment necessary to protect the public health and safety, the First Selectmen must take action for the purpose of ensuring civil preparedness and mitigating the effects of this public health emergency situation upon the residents of the Town of East Lime. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 28-1 Subsection 8 and 28-8A Subsection A and 3.2 of the Charter of the Town of East Lime and Section 31.06E of the East Lime Code of Ordinances, that a state of emergency now exists in the Town of East Lime. And it is further proclaimed and ordered that during the existence of said emergency, the Chief Executive of the Town of East Lime, its First Selectman, Mark C. Nickerson, shall assume powers, functions, and duties prescribed and provided by law, including but not limited to Connecticut General Statute Sections 28-18 and 28-8AA. Section 3.2 of the Charter of the Town of East Lime and Section 31.06E of the East Lime Code of Ordinances, and may take such action as he may be necessary, as may be necessary or desirable, to protect the public health and mitigate this emergency. And it is further proclaimed and ordered that this state of emergency shall remain in effect until further notice. And it is further proclaimed and ordered that this order shall be available for review and inspection in the office of the East Lime Town Clerk during regular business hours, and shall be posted on the Town of East Lime's website. It was dated March 16, 2020, 1:00 p.m., and signed by Mark C. Nickerson, the First Selectman, and tested by Edward B. O'Connell, Town Attorney.
Thank you. So what that does is gives us an opportunity, when necessary, to make plans for emergencies. And we find ourselves in this, meaning the closing of town buildings, meaning giving orders that employees will work or will not work, meaning we'll secure supplies, even though we don't have a line in our budget that says emergency supplies or hand sanitizer. And we're talking about thousands of dollars' worth of emergency equipment that we might need to secure. We're including laptop computers for working off-site, remote access, that might be necessary in order to produce payroll if we can't come into this building. And those are some of the plans that we're being, we're preparing for in the event that this emergency continues for a period of time. So it's best that we have a motion for that, to accept the Declaration of Emergency, State of Emergency?
I will move to support the Declaration of State of Emergency for the Town of East Lime declared by First Selectman Mark C. Nickerson on March 16, 2020, at 1:00 p.m.
Second.
I'll second.
Fantastic.
Bipartisan.
I think that's appropriate. Thank you. Is there any comments, concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. It's unanimous vote. We are, namely, again, for reimbursement from federal sources for any extra expenses, but also in preparation for being flexible, being prepared, and being able to change on the fly as it might be appropriate as this thing rolls out. The rapid pace of this virus and its response has been, you know, mind-boggling. What we were preparing for on Friday, to release late Friday and early Saturday, halfway through the day changed. So we held back, and we waited for today. And I'm glad we did. There were a couple towns that announced certain things, and by the end of the day, announced different things, and by today, announced different things. Where we thought this thing out, we met with our leadership team, we met with department heads, we did a pre-EOC meeting, we've sat in a dozen phone, telephone conferences and video conferences with Department of Public Health, with Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, DMUS, and Legislite Health District has spoken to our department heads, and has been my right-hand resource for the last week. And we think we're going about it the right way. Our response is, and I think that may be in front of you as well, that we are going to close, as of 8:00 p.m. tonight, all town buildings to the general public until further notice. Town hall phones will be answered during normal business hours.
We don't have.
We don't have this?
No.
I may not have distributed that. It might be sitting on my desk. My apologies. Let's get it. Nope.
Look at my fingers.
Yeah.
I'm very dry with all the hand sanitizer.
Yeah, everybody is. Yeah.
Did you get the front page?
He got the back page. Thank you.
So we'll go over it again. This is the, the impacts of the virus crisis are being felt all over town, and we are struggling to keep up with the rapid changes and updates. As of tonight at 8:00 p.m., short time from now, all town buildings will be closed to the general public until further notice. Town hall phones will be answered by the staff. We're going to have the staff still work. Other departments in the community center and other buildings will do the same. I've asked town employees to continue to report to work normally and do their business via phone, regular mail, and email. And we're confident that we'll find workarounds for most of the issues that might come up. There are legal matters at the Town Clerk's office, there are things like people having to pay tax bills or work things out with DMV. Of course, DMV is aiming to close as well, but there's inspections downstairs from land use and such. But we will get through this with communication and workarounds. The town transfer station will remain open during normal business hours, but they have changed the way they do business. The public will not be allowed in the tollhouse or the weigh station. The only form of payment accepted will be credit cards for this period of time. And in addition, town personnel will not be allowed to assist patrons to unload items as they are often helpful and do so. But we'll not be able to do that again. Social distancing and also just spreading germs. Trash and regular recycle pickups will continue under the regular schedules until further noticed. While the senior center is closed, because they're in a town building, the transportation for our seniors will continue on a limited basis, meaning we'll still do medical and grocery-only runs. And those citizens already know the drill. They'll contact the senior center for further information and to schedule a ride. There will be no public meetings for any commission for the duration of the town hall shutdown. While we're hopeful that we can resume operations by the beginning of next month, we're being told to plan for a longer period of time. We're also hopeful that we will not have to fully shut down all nonessential town services. However, the rapid pace of events and cancellations surrounding this has caused our team to begin to prepare for different scenarios. Our town's leadership team and Emergency Operations Center has been busy planning for the next possible steps, or the possible next steps. Closings that were previously announced continue on and are as follows, that all public schools, of course, including the activities, the sports, all activity in the schools have been canceled for the next several weeks. Parks and Rec have suspended all program activities. The senior center, all program activities, including the cafe meals, have been canceled. Meals on Wheels is continuing. The Fire Marshal's Office is prioritizing, and the Building Inspector's Office is prioritizing an inspection schedule only when necessary. Town Clerk and the Registars are waiting, awaiting word from the Secretary of State whether there will be a primary or not. The presidential primaries coming up on the, I believe, the 28th of September. They are preparing extra absentee ballots in case it's still on, because I'm sure we'll have a surge of absentee ballots. But we're also anticipating there might be a delay in the primary. The Water Department, of course, the water meter replacement has been suspended, and the library, of course, is closed there in a public building. Emergency services have a number of different scenarios that they're, and procedures that they've enacted to enhance the safety of their, of the personnel, and of course, the patients as well. And the police are also limiting their exposure whenever possible, but overall, they have a heightened sense of awareness. This is an ever-evolving plan. If this, if things change, our leadership team, the emergency management team, are already making plans for what could be the next stage, or two, or three. But this is a reasonable approach where we can keep the wheels of government going, and maybe even do some catch-up during some quiet weeks, and keep people gainfully employed and working. We're also working out something for our employees, those that might have small children affected by the closing of schools, or might be caring for senior at home, or might be at that age, frankly, or have a compromised immune system, that they can take a liberal leave of absence, meaning unused vacation time, comp time, sick time, floating holiday time, any earned time off, they can, they'll be able to plug in during this period of time if they choose to do so. And we're pretty confident, we're hopeful, that we can keep all offices at the town hall and the other buildings operational at this stage. Our website has been updated. We were getting, I was getting calls about the town website. We wanted to get the information right before we put it out there. We'll have a video that we just produced that we'll be putting out tomorrow on the website, kind of goes through what we just went through. I've gotten some input from some of you, and that's valued, and I appreciate that. These are very trying times. I was on, like I said, we had Legislite Health District talk about the seriousness of this, and how one person can affect about, on average, I think, four or five people. Remember that old shampoo commercial from the 70s, and I told two friends, and they told two friends, and so on and so on? And you know what happens when one person affects five, and those five affect five? How this can double and triple in just a matter of hours, if not days? And that's what the CDC is trying to convey in their messaging, is stop the spread by social distancing. And all this sanitation, of course, of washing hands and cleaning surfaces with disinfectants. We are fully stocked as a town right now, but our supply chain is thin. We think we've identified some spots where we'll be able to get some supplies in. I mean, the fire EMT, you can imagine, EMT services, they want to, they wipe down a whole truck after transporting a patient. And that occurs several times a day. So they're going through supplies in a very, very quick, rapid pace of fashion, and police the same. Of course, when we don't have public coming into this building, we'll be concentrating more on work surfaces and a little less on, you know, public spaces, because the public won't be here, like this room. This room won't get used again for several weeks, right? So, any questions?
I saw, or heard on the news earlier, that the Governor was considering closing restaurants. Have you heard any update on that?
The executive order today that came out was a joint executive order from, for the Governors of New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. And they're following the Massachusetts Governor, the closed restaurants and bars as of 8:00 p.m. this evening. Also, he, they close health clubs and physical fitness places, movie theaters. What else? There was one other.
So are we following that?
Well, we're, we follow the state executive orders, indeed.
The Governor has issued that.
He has issued that. That is law, and that is as of 8:00 p.m. on March 16th. So bars, restaurants, restaurants can deliver food, and they can prepare takeout food, curbside dining food. So I know the local restaurants are hopeful that people will still patronize them and go to their spots and take food home. Yes.
For the senior citizens?
Yes.
The cafe meals have been canceled, but most of those people who use the cafe meals do not get Meals on Wheels. Has there been discussion of extending that service to them?
Yes, I believe that has been. I met with Kathy today, and we're making sure that those handful of regulars are taken care of in one way or the other. And it might not be Meals on Wheels, but we'll have an answer for them. But I think there is going to be a Meals on Wheel extension for them.
Are they allowed to use the kitchen at the senior center for that kind of preparation?
The volunteers, yes. The volunteers can, because they're considered not employees, but regular users. We just don't want the general public coming in from all walks of life. But the people that have volunteered for Meals on Wheels will continue to do so.
For the trash, sanitary workers, the trash collection?
Yeah.
I know, notice as I leave for work many mornings that people overfill the barrels and leave the tops open.
Yeah.
And most of those things are contained in a bag, but sometimes the bags break. And I wonder if there might be something put on our website on behalf of our sanitary workers that people not overfill their barrels, and that the tops must be able to be closed.
I'll pass that along. We've had some windy weather, and that more than, I don't overfill, but my top ends up opening up anyway, sometimes, depending on where you are and which direction the wind's blowing sometimes. But good point, and...
On a regular basis, there are many...
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So perhaps...
I'll pass that along to Joe, and maybe we can get that message out. There's a lot of messaging going on right now, so that's a message for any day, but we'll try to put that out there.
If you're able to get it on channel 2.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. What about the services of the National Guard if we should need them?
If we need to? You know the National Guard was called out down in Westchester County in New York, where there was a significant outbreak, and rather eye-opening one, and they did call the National Guard and shut down. The town, really, I think you could come and go, but there was restrictions. And we just heard that tonight, we talked about the Bay Area in San Francisco has been shut down.
Three weeks.
Stay-in-place orders. So three weeks? And my guess is, in California, the National Guard will probably be called in for extra security during that period of time. If that starts coming into New England, that way of, you know, and again, we're planning on several different phases of this, and that would be a dramatic phase. But if so, we'll be prepared for it.
So you've been consulting with them? Have you been consulting with them yet?
Not with the National Guard, but with our emergency management team, and we'll call on them if necessary. But they're always standing guard, ready, ready for us. And again, I would guess that the Governor would also be part of that if they're, if they're shutting down, or stay-in-place area, executive order, that would encompass National Guard and state police and all to enforce those.
Thank you.
There was some confusion on today's executive order. Bars and restaurants, movie theaters, and other bigger gatherings, I would think, like bowling alleys and stuff. But the press picked it up and made it sound like all retail, all businesses will be closed.
Yeah, I saw that in a couple spots, too.
And it's not what the executive order said, and it took off on, and the press picked it up, and social media, too. And I got a confirmation later on in the day, because I got a call from a local retailer, and that is not the plan yet, yet. But I'll also tell you that stores are quiet, and rightfully so. I got a call that the Providence Place Mall in Providence will shut down for this.
Is there, is it any-size business, any-size gym? I don't know if it was clear in that.
Gyms, spas, fitness centers, I would think, anything that you're thinking of, gym equipment, yoga studios.
That's what I thought. I know there was some confusion, because he had the, because he said any activities with 50 or more. But my understanding was it was any restaurant, any gym.
Yeah.
Events that are 50 and more on, in addition to that.
Right. Zen and Now voluntarily shut down sometime this weekend, but the order came to, and that would have been a facility, meaning a gym, people, people working out, sweating, and being in close proximity, and using the same equipment.
So Mark, as we move forward, I'm anticipating that we may have, we're probably going to have budget issues going over budget with 911 call dispatch center. I anticipate if things get worse, that's going to be, could get inundated. Police is a concern. I assume we're not going to, at this point, if we, we have our contingency plan, contingency funds in place if we have to.
Right.
Go over budget needs to meet our needs. I know that's part of the emergency declaration. I just want to make sure.
And that would be some of the federal reimbursable funds, right? So, so one example, great example. You know, the police probably aren't incurring extra expense right now.
Right now, right.
But if the numbers hold right, the 30% of us will get it, probably 40% of them, because of all the, in the work, 40% of the police force goes down, and the other 60% have to work. They'll be working a lot of overtime hours to cover shifts, and it's that cost that will drive it. Or adding calls into dispatcher, we have to bring a third dispatcher on. Or the virus goes through the dispatch center. And with, you know, the lack of testing, kids available, it's very difficult to know someone, I want to put myself in your age group, but your age group or my age group, you don't know, you won't see symptoms for up to 12 days, is what I'm reading. And I'm only, I only know as much as what everyone else reads. I mean, I'm reading official stuff out of CDC, Department of Health, and Legislite. If it doesn't have one of those three on the bottom of the Facebook information thing or the, don't read it. Let it come from an official government source, and, because there's a lot of things, like the press today, taking an executive order and skewing it, and all of a sudden, people think they have to close their business. So to the answer to your question, yeah, those added costs would be part of a FEMA, if it ends up being FEMA, federal reimbursement. In the meantime, we would have funds through contingency or undesignated fund balances, you know, our save, our rainy day fund that we could borrow from, but pay back with the federal funds. That's how we generally do that.
Okay. And my other thought is, if we do have a crisis where we have, say, 911 dispatch center, people going up, I don't know if it's, we can do it, but identifying individuals that maybe have worked with us in the past or something, that if we had to bring in an emergency case, we could, we could have them on speed dial. God forbid something happens, and we need to have all hands on deck.
Yeah, with our, you know, moving to independent police and, what's the, what's the term for the dispatchers? They have to be?
Collect certified.
Collect, collect certified. This is a whole, if they have the certifications, and back, back...
Right.
Back 10 years ago, you could get a fireman's wife to sit there, answer the phone, and get on the walkie-talkie. It's so different now. But if they're collect certified and all that, yeah. And we, and we have mutual aid agreements with our first responders, but even our town clerks, you know, for, if this building had to get quarantined and locked down, but another town is open, that we could use their services or go over and park ourselves over there. So we're looking at all sorts of different mutual aid scenarios, but also, of course, our first responders always have a mutual aid compact with other towns, so we could always use the services of other towns. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Good point. Other questions?
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
Suggestion. One of my concerns is we do have a correctional facility in town, and I'm hopeful that perhaps we can have a hotline to the Governor and the Commissioner of Corrections with some sort of backup if they end up with a bloom of this outbreak in a correctional facility. If they end up with a bloom of this outbreak in a correctional facility, we would be so overtaxed and it would be impossible to accommodate that. We will need backup from other towns and the state of Connecticut and probably the National Guard. So I'm hoping we can at least be thinking about those contingencies as well.
I think I, I read that no one's, they're not allowing any more visitors into the, those facilities.
It is a controlled environment in that respect.
Yeah, so.
But you still have employees going in and out.
But the employees coming in and out of the ones.
Correction officer.
Right.
Could come, in fact, didn't bring it to work.
Right.
So I think we have to be prepared for that potential.
Indeed, and I'm sure they're prepared inside because that would be where it would really.
Right.
Bloom is inside the facility. But you're right, it's our 911 responders after, to deal with that. So you're absolutely right. Thank you for bringing that up. We'll, we'll contact the prison tomorrow and see if they have any contingency plans. Very good. Anyone else?
Yeah, one of the most important things in this time of uncertainty is communications.
Yeah.
So tonight's, I'm tempted that, but going forward, just the regular town hall numbers, the first number that citizens who call with concerns and then it'll be sent to.
Well, if you're, if you're trying to do business with the town clerk's office or the building department or.
I'm not just talking business, I'm talking questions and concerns, whatever citizens, whatever it may be. People are going to have a lot of questions and as the situation changes, we're going to have to clearly communicate changes to law posture as well. Anything that, any requirements or any thoughts of cost tracking? We're going to potentially look for federal reimbursement. Is there a methodology to track the additional costs that we may experience a spot of so that it's, you know, something that we can stand on when we make the application?
Yeah, so it's a good point. We do that. And we got really good at that during Hurricane Sandy, Superstorm Sandy and Irene, I think it was, and a few of the other disasters. We are really good at tracking those expenses and we've already developed a code in the finance offices, we're paying bills to track that so that it can be pulled right out and we can be identified exactly what it was. And indeed, to go back to your communication before we move on, you know, our town website, we're going to try to keep up to date as this thing develops. We have town Facebook sites, the public safety town Facebook site is a great up-to-date place for, the people have always gone to for up-to-date information. You know, this, this is so different than when we lose power for a week. And the storm, a storm comes in and the limbs are down and all that, yet it still is an emergency and it is a changing atmosphere. So we're, we're going to keep that site updated and let people know what's going on out there.
And I recommend we, you date the notices they put on the site.
Yes.
So people don't get.
Yes, it's a good point.
Two or three days old.
Exactly.
It happens.
A lot, a lot, yes.
Any consideration for, and I know we're still planning for future stages, but for vendors to support decontamination if we do have a bloom? Something to potentially look at, whether it's in the town hall or in another building to come in and do decontamination. It's one thing to wipe and maintain, but if there's a, in a widespread case. And just consider coming in fogging area. I don't know if the town has that capability or training to fog, but fogging is one of the best ways if you have an actual case.
I saw that Delta was doing that on their planes. And we're, we're really leaning on the L and M, the hospital facilities in the area if there were to be a bloom, specifically in our town. We will be leaning on them in Ledzlight Health District. We do not have any plans in place now for big shelters or, or, you know, makeshift pop-up decontamination facilities.
And the last thing is if the town employee or leader becomes infected, the plan to have someone take their place.
Right.
Everyone should have a backup and defending and as we get, if it starts spreading, separation of those two people.
Right.
So that the primary and the backup are not sitting in the same meeting, even if they're five or six feet apart.
It's true.
It's just, you know, we don't wish that upon any citizen.
Right.
But if someone is incapacitated and they can't perform their functions, whether it's yourself, whether it's the public works director, the next in charge person should be kept separate so it's not spread to them first.
Right, thank you. All good points and as you know, Mark, no, Kevin is the first deputy. And, and all of us can step up and, and help during a crisis. We are, you know, our emergency management director is Chief Finkelstein. He's well-versed in this and I have every confidence that we'll get through this. But you're right, we have backup throughout the town and we'll continue to watch that and monitor that. Good job. Any other questions or comments?
Just one other comment.
Yeah.
Stop and Shop has announced that they're changing their hours from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but that from 6:00 to 7:30 AM is just for seniors over the age of 60. So that the people at most risk will be in there by themselves. And I believe Tri-Town is doing it from 7:00 to 8:00 AM as well. Those are the, I haven't heard anything about Costco, but I know those two are. So that might be something that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, that they have done. So I think great from the community aspect. That's it.
Thank you. That, that, that's great. And we, we're starting to hear those, those kindness stories all over town. And I'd, I'd like to point out that we've gotten several calls, dozens of calls at the first selectman's office, people wanting to volunteer and help seniors. How can I help kind of thing? And at this point, we're trying to, you know, keep everyone away from one another. But there might be a time where we can't provide transportation for the seniors. And, and maybe there'll be an opportunity for volunteerism. So we are taking names. We will put out a blast on the Eastline Volunteer Corps if that, that need arises. There might be a need for restaurants to have people help deliver or whatever. So by all means, reach out, reach out through your church, reach out through the Eastline Volunteer Corps, my office, my office phone number is 860-691-4110. If you have questions, the communication piece, I'd like to not do it with each night of the 19,000 people individually. I'd like to broadcast information once through the town website or our town Facebook page or through the press. But, but we're here to answer questions and also, you know, take volunteer names, et cetera. So we, we had a scheduled meeting on Wednesday, I believe. Did we cancel that? Not yet.
I think we just.
And that was going to be a con.
Well, your, your thing just pretty much canceled everything anyway.
It sort of did. There is an opportunity the governor did make way for us to have virtual meetings. Especially in a, in a setting that would be an emergency situation. We can always have, we've always been able to do that. But, but a regular scheduled meeting can be a virtual meeting if we have a call-in number, I believe, and, and as long as the public can call in and listen in to a teleconference or a video conference, a Zoom conference, we can have one. I'd rather not do that until we need to. If this lingers for a while, we're going to need to. As selectmen of this town, we will be able to meet in this building. I'd like to do it after hours, after the employees leave. And, but if we need to in a couple of weeks have a meeting, we'll, we'll call for one and try to do it here so at least we can broadcast. And we would probably make a telephone number available so people could call in, ask questions or, or whatever during the meeting if we leave time for public comment. Otherwise, they can observe on the TV.
So to be clear, do we have a meeting this Wednesday or not?
No, I think we canceled this Wednesday's meeting. I think this supersedes it because we actually didn't have, we had a swearing in, thank you. We had a swearing in, we had a bond council thing that we can wait on. You know, everything's being delayed, as you know, as you might know, the governor also gave an order for the timeline of budgets to be delayed. So, so there's going to be some fluidity on the, on the timeline of budgets this season. And we're waiting orders for the, we know he's working on an executive order for land use timelines. As you know, as former chair, as I was former chair of zoning, and many of you have been ex-officios to planning or zoning or wetlands, there's always a time limit. There's always, you get 30 days or 60 days to make a, to make a decision on an application. And we know the governor's working on absolving or delaying that or putting on hold that for a period of time. There is one application I think Wetlands is working on that is in that period of time and we're, we'll be looking for, for action on that. And that's about it.
Employee access to the building. Do all employees have keys to the building?
No.
So how will entry and egress, entry be handled?
We're going to have someone available for them to leave. Egress is.
Yeah, you leave, it's okay.
Egress means leave, right? Yeah, you push the, push the bar and go. But coming in, we're going to have someone at the door at 8 o'clock. And then we have a way that I'd rather not speak to publicly that they can get into the building even if someone wasn't standing by the door. So they'll, we're going to have an opportunity for them to get into the building.
So the town hall after, the town hall will be locked?
Yes, correct. And the senior, the, the community center as well. Yes. And the lobby of the police station, I believe, as well. If any of you need to get in, you, you are allowed as, as selectmen to come in, let us know, let Sandy know and, and we can conference, bring you in or whatever. And my number's always available for you to, if you hear anything, if, yeah, because things are going to bubble up, rumors, what's going on? And otherwise, I'll try to keep you up to date. If I'm keeping you up to date via email, it's just, it's not going to be a conversation. It's not going to be a meeting, but I might broadcast updates to you. Please don't respond and reply to all, just accept that. Those will be public documents and we'll make them available to the public. But if I need to update you that we've closed the town hall or there's been a case of the virus among our employees and you want to be, you want to know of that and we want to update you of that. But don't reply back to all because that would be the exchange of communication. So F I, FOI rules still will apply, but there's, there's going to be exceptions to those rules with a virtual meeting scenario. Is that all?
Just, just clarification, the buildings are closed, parks are staying open right now.
Outdoor parks are staying open, Parks and Rec programming canceled?
Yep.
So all those things that people sign up for at the senior center, at Parks and Rec canceled? And I think, you know, youth services, youth sports, you know, so.
All independent, all independent sports organizations, Little League and stuff like that have pushed out at least April.
Yeah, very good. Thank you all. You want to have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Bipartisan again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night y'all. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.